We're gonna have our invocation by Councilor.
Morning.
You ready, Mr. President? Yes, sir. I don't have my, uh, yes, sir. I don't, uh, who's the pledge will leave since I don't have that document in front of me, so. Mr. Hill, you can do the invocation.
It's me today.
Oh, may we bow heads. May we bow heads. Gracious Father, thank you for this beautiful sunshine, Father God. Thank you for shedding the light on each and every one of us in our entire city, Father God. Father God, we need you, Father God, in our city, in our communities, Father God. We need help with this crime, Father God. We ask you, Father God, to come down and touch the hearts of all of our constituents, Father God, that things may be better, Father God, that they may get along and work together, Father God. Touch our police department, Father God. Give them the strength, the mindset, Father God, to take care of the people of your children, Father God. Father God, we ask this in all thy name. This we ask in Jesus' name. Let's all say amen.
Please stand for the pledge. Salute the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, to the United States of America.
States of America and to the Republic of which stands.
With liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Let's see, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Hilliard.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Present.
Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams.
Good morning.
Morning, sir. Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Present.
President Parker.
Uh, present. All right, uh, need a motion for the minutes, October sixth and thirteenth of two thousand and twenty.
So moved.
Second.
All right, got Councilmember Williams and President Pro Tem Alexander. Voting started. We got Councilmember Abbott. Is she present back? No, not in yet. Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn. Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes, here.
Okay, thank you, sir. I'm sorry. Councilmember Smithman, uh, is she in yet? Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye. Okay, uh, the minutes are not ready for September twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty, uh, October twentieth, two thousand and twenty through April sixth, two thousand and twenty-one.
I'm in council.
Okay, all right, uh, let me read the, um, the Council of the City of Birmingham having reviewed the agenda presented for this meeting on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-one hereby finds that the proposed actions contained on the agenda to be considered at this meeting constitute essential minimum functions of this body. Just need a motion in a second.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Williams, and I'll throw Councilmember Hilliard in there.
Okay.
Okay, voting started, and we have Councilmember Abbott. Is she in yet? Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt. Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smithman. Councilmember Williams.
Mr. Clark, I just want to, Mr. Smithman did have that she may not be late. She may be late.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay.
All right.
That's right. All right, let's, um, go through the consent agenda, um.
Yes, sir. We will start with, looks like we'll skip all the way over to page nine. Let's go with items fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen.
No, what, okay, yeah, okay.
Page ten. We have items eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two. Uh, Mr. President, if you will, give me a minute to go over a couple of corrections with item number nineteen. On item nineteen, now that amount should change to six thousand dollars. And it will be allocated as follows. Looks like four thousand dollars from District Eight, which would be Councilmember Hoyt's district, and two thousand dollars from District Seven, which would be Council President Pro Tem Alexander's district. So we will reflect that and also as the recommendations are outlined on the agenda, make that change as well. And add Council President Pro Tem Alexander. Um, we will pick back up with the consent agenda on page eleven with items twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. Please note that item number twenty-three has been requested to be withdrawn. Page twelve, we have items twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two on consent. Page thirteen, we have items thirty-three, thirty-four, and thirty-five on consent. Page fourteen, we have items thirty-six, thirty-seven, thirty-eight, and thirty-nine on consent. Page fifteen, items forty, forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three designated as consent items. Page sixteen, we have items forty-four, forty-five, forty-six, and forty-seven on consent. Page seventeen, we have items forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-one, and fifty-two on consent, and I have before you threw an email and also placed here, looks like three addendum items, council.
Yes, sir. All right, um, are we, uh, how's everybody on the consent agenda?
I do want to add fifty. Thirty-five. Thirty-five, you could take off, and those, uh, additional ones, we just added that I received email this morning as something on fifty. It used to be fifty-three to fifty-four, I guess.
You want to add them, council?
No, no, no. I want them off. I didn't know they were consent. Okay, very good, okay.
Okay, which one you want? Which one did you want? You said thirty, what now?
I think it was thirty-five that I wanted to end me. Yes, thirty-five.
Okay, all right. Everybody else. Okay, all right. All items designated as consent or routine and non-controversial will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, citizen, interested in a public hearing, so request. If so, such item or items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation will be read. All of the matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced.
Move the items.
I'll second it.
Okay. Councilmember Abbott, is she in? Councilmember Hilliard. On the consent agenda, Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Okay, gotta get back.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman still out. I'll take it, uh, Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Pro Tem Alexander.
Aye.
Council President Parker.
Aye, okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Okay, uh, where are we? Um, let's go ahead and get started, Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir. Uh, first item. Looks like item one, the ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty dash thirty-two, to change zone district boundaries from R seven multiple dwelling district to Q M U D qualified mixed-use district in order to construct a new mixed-use development that includes multifamily hotel, office, retail, medical, office, parking garage, and open spaces use, uh, uses, open space uses filed by Brian Wolf, representing the owner, Housing Authority of Birmingham District, for property located at twenty-five twenty-three South Town Court, situated in southwest quarter of section thirty-one township seventeen range two west in hearing of all parties, and this is the second reading of this item. This item is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using this link, and the link is, uh, laid out in your agenda and also on the internet. Please use the hand raised function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two, and the access code is one eight seven one oh four forty-five forty-three. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Uh, would that be Pro Tem Alexander?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Item is before you, council.
Good morning, um, Mr. Gambrell, is she on? Good morning. How you doing, sir?
Good morning. Very well. How are you?
Good. Guess we got a lot of time together this morning, so.
Yeah, I think so. There are several cases, yes, sir. In fact, I was gonna mention that, uh, one, two, and four on the agenda this morning are all dealing with South Town. They're all rezoning cases. Um, basically, uh, they're separate cases because they're a different ownership, uh, currently, but they're all filed, um, on behalf of the owner by Brian Wolf. So I don't know if you would like to consider one, two, and four at the same time, uh, but it all deals with a South Town property.
All right, let me ask the, uh, body. Y'all wanna bring them all individually? Or bring them?
Yeah, together.
Yes. Together.
Yes, sir.
Okay, Mr. Clark, you could.
Yes, sir.
We could read, uh, to the.
Two and four?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Item two. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty dash thirty-three, to change zone district boundaries from B one neighborhood business district to Q M U D qualified mixed-use district, downtown district in order to construct a new mixed-use development. It includes hotel, office, retail, medical, office, and parking garage filed by STEM Heidinger, representing the owner of Bell South Telecommunications LLC for property located at nine eleven twenty-third Street South, situated in the northwest quarter section six township eighteen south range two west, and the hearing of all insured, insured parties, and I'll just go under item four before I do the tagline. An ordinance to further amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC two thousand and twenty-one dash six, to change zone district boundaries from B one neighborhood business district to Q M U D qualified mixed-use district in order to construct a new mixed-use development that includes multifamily hotel, office, retail, medical office, and parking garage filed by Steve Heidinger, representing the owner Ken Webster for the property located at nine fifty-nine twenty-third Street South and situated in northwest quarter of section six township eighteen south range two west in the hearing of our parties, and this statement applies to both items, uh, just entered on the record. This is a public hearing. These are public hearing items. Any persons who wish to speak for or against these items may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the web and also on the paper copy as well. Please use the hand raised function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is one four one five six five five zero 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 two. The access code is one eight seven one oh four forty-five forty-three. If you're calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item, and motion on those two items as well.
So moved.
Second.
All right, Council Williams in, Pro Tem Alexander. The items are before you, sir.
Okay, Mr. Gambrell.
Yes, sir. This is Tim Gambrell. I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham, and, uh, the three cases today are ZAC two thousand and twenty dash thirty-two, ZAC two thousand and twenty dash thirty-three, ZAC dash two thousand and twenty-one dash six, and they're all in the South Side, uh, neighborhood. Proposed use is a mixed-use development. It includes affordable housing, multifamily, hotel, office, retail, medical office, parking garage, and open space. Um, the subject property sits on approximately five point nine two acres of land, currently zoned R seven. Abutting the subject property to the north is zone B two general business. Abutting, uh, to the south and west of the property is zoned R seven. To the east of the property is St. Vincent's Hospital, which is zone B six. The applicant is requesting, uh, the mixed-use downtown zoning district to allow for a mixed-use development that includes affordable housing, multifamily hotel, office, retail, medical office, parking garage, and open space. Additional details include, uh, the development is proximate to BJCTA max stops, and the developer has initiated discussion with UAB to explore if their anticipated review of Blazer Express Route might warrant an extension east to the site. Uh, they are intending to improve transit stops and/or furniture in the area. The developers, a project goal of adding a bus stop within the project boundary, and they would provide the appropriate structure and furniture. Um, the affordable housing component includes two hundred and twenty units of, uh, affordable housing replacement for the current H A B D residents. There'll be sixty family units and a hundred and sixty senior units. Uh, appropriate infrastructure along the frontage of a block and walkability. The planned streetscape improvements include new street profiles developed in concert with the city of Birmingham Department of Transportation with new sidewalks, landscape medians. Uh, the redevelopment also includes pocket parks, which improve pedestrian experience and walkability. Um, cycling bike lockers, the redevelopment's improvements include adding bike lanes along twenty-four Streets South. As each vertical development is designed, they will explore opportunities to add bike lockers within the development. Uh, reduction of off-street parking ratio and shared parking structure. The mixed-use development is designed to balance site activation throughout the day with offsetting parking demands. Blocks A, B, and C have parking structures designed to be shared and to reduce the off-street parking required if each use were to be considered independently. So they're looking at this thing as a mixed-use development and, uh, adopting their parking as appropriate. Uh, the city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as mixed-use downtown. The proposed rezoning request is consistent with the long-range land use plan. Um, parking spaces are not required in the mixed-use downtown district. Where parking is provided in the mixed-use downtown district, all requirements as articles shall apply, uh, and it uh, demonstrates how they're planning, uh, to include twenty-six hundred parking spaces within this development. Uh, neighborhood recommendation, the Five Point South Neighborhood Association held a special call meeting on January sixth, two thousand and twenty-one, and voted to approve the proposed zoning request. The vote was five to zero. The South Side Neighborhood Association is not meeting at this time. Uh, Ms. Irene Johnson, the neighborhood president, stated she believes the city council will make a good decision in this case. Uh, this property is located within the South Side-North Side Framework Plan area, and the framework plan for this area is in progress, and the implementation committee has not been formed at this time. The zoning advisory committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, February sixteen, two thousand and twenty-one, to review the applicant's rezoning request and voted to recommend of approval with the following Q condition. The height of building shall not exceed two hundred and twenty-five feet. Planning and zoning committee, uh, met at its regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, to review the applicant's rezoning request and voted no recommendation at that time. And that concludes the report, uh, for all three cases.
Okay, all right. It's Gambrell. Thank you. Um, wanted to open up to the public uh, first, and then we'll, I guess we'll come back to the, um, the, uh, the owners or the applicant or the owners.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we wouldn't hear from the, from the owner first.
Well.
I'd be interested to hear what they have to say.
Okay, all right. Um, so I know we have Brian on, and is Mr. Webster on as well?
Uh, Ms. Councilor Parker, I'm Carol Clark. I would be happy to just introduce who's on the call today to speak for the owners, uh, if I may.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good morning, uh, Mayor Woodfin, Council President Parker, city councilors, city staff, and members of the public. My name is Carol Clark, and I serve as general manager of South Side Development Company, and we are the development partner to the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District for the South Town redevelopment. And, uh, SDC, as we call it, is a special purpose entity with three members. Uh, one member being Corporate Realty, uh, a second member being the Benoit Group, and, uh, a third member is, the third member is, uh, sister companies Breck and SPM. And I like to boast that we are one-third African-American owned because ownership is the highest form of, uh, minority inclusion, and, and we all care about that very deeply. So in terms of overall status, I'm happy to report that, uh, H A B D has taken, uh, great time and care in, uh, facilitating the relocation of, uh, the current site residents, and, uh, Kristy Hilliard is here from, uh, representing the owner today. She works in the real estate department and can answer specific questions, uh, that you may have regarding that, but, but generally speaking, uh, they are about ninety percent complete with relocation, having, uh, taken care throughout COVID and really starting before COVID over a year ago to, uh, understand the, uh, choices, uh, the preferences of residents in terms of, um, you know, how they would like to permanently or temporarily relocate if they were returning to the site. And, uh, they were given several options, and H A B has, has to the greatest extent possible facilitated those options over the last year and is almost complete. Uh, several residents who chose to return to the site will be able to remain on site. So when you drive through the site, if you go, well, there's still people here, um, that is intentional, and, um, several families are still located on the site in the northwest quadrant of the property. Uh, that would be the area bounded by University, Twenty-third Street, Twenty-Fourth Street, and Ninth Avenue South, so approximately eighty-eight families will remain on the site until replacement housing is, is, uh, is completed on the site. And, uh, the target schedule right now is for replacement housing to begin in the fall of this year, so uh, demolition will start in the summer after, you know, everybody's resettled, and, um, uh, we will, we, you know, our hope is to proceed with, you know, as planned, with demolition starting about mid-June and, uh, the, um, first phase of residential construction starting in the fall of this year. So, uh, to present the technical points of the case, if you have questions on the case, uh, Becky Carpenter, who's an urban planner, uh, by, by background, even though she's a project manager in the development division of Corporate Realty, uh, she can answer technical points, technical questions on the, um, zoning case and may want to make a few remarks starting out, and then again, Kristy Hilliard is here representing the owner, so uh, whatever's your pleasure, uh, city council, if you'd like to hear from the public before uh, hearing from us, and we can just answer questions or just whatever's your pleasure.
I want to hear the plan first.
Becky.
I understand, Mr. Clark.
If you could walk through plan, uh.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to. Good morning. I'm Becky Carpenter, Development Project Manager for Corporate Realty Development, and we're excited to speak with you today and present this case. Um, redevelopment of the site has been discussed for years, and it's considered a key economic development opportunity for the city of Birmingham, but as Carol outlined, you know, more importantly, it benefits residents. Um, throughout this planning process, we've collaborated with residents and area stakeholders to arrive at the proposed plan before you today. We've worked closely with H A B D, who've supported their residents throughout the process, as Carol said, to determine their needs and help offer residents the option of returning to the site into replacing housing that is the first phase to be developed. Um, this master plan is a result of significant community engagement and input from the residents and an advisory board of various stakeholders. The proposed mixed-use development includes replacement housing first, then office, hotel, ground floor retail, and pocket parks and green space. This is a uniquely positioned site in Birmingham. It lends itself to more dense urban development. And just part of why we're requesting the mixed-use downtown zoning. This aligns with the long-range land use plan for the area, but recognizing the unlimited height associated with mixed-use downtown zoning, we proactively sought to put a Q condition limitation on the site and worked with staff to determine that two hundred and twenty-five feet was reasonable, given the context of University Boulevard as a commercial corridor between UAB and St. Vincent's. And with that, I'd be happy to help answer any questions you might have.
All right, Ms. Carpenter, you talked, you, you covered all three of them, right? I just want to make sure before we ask now, open it up to the public. All right, uh, we're asking the, uh, public, if we have any questions regarding either items one, two, or four. Um, we're taking them all as a, as a couple of them together, so, uh, before, before we go to our, uh, colleagues on the council. So there are members of the public that would like to speak to items either one, two, or four.
Mr. President, should we not see the presentation, the actual drawings and the layout and the, and all that before we ask people to make comments on it? We haven't seen anything yet. Drawing?
They said they were finished with the presentation, so let's give, give.
Site, site development plans? We haven't seen.
Okay, well, they, okay, Councilmember Abbott, I was saying, they pause, oh, hold on. When they paused and said that they were finished with their initial remarks, I then turned to the public. Um, I don't know, they're gonna come back once they hear from the public and talk through it, so do y'all have any diagrams, any, uh, drawings, or, uh, Ms. Carpenter, or?
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to share my screen and show the, um, conceptual land use plan.
Okay, if you want to go into that first.
Absolutely.
Did we do, um? Did we do, um?
Is everyone able to see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the conceptual land use plan. As I mentioned, this is the result of a lot of community engagement. We did a series of open houses, actually back in two thousand eighteen, with area residents, and then also formed a body of an advisory board that, um, is formed up of just stakeholders in the area. Um, and this was the land use plan that we arrived at. I'll walk you through the site clockwise. So Block A is up here into the northeast. This is closest to the current S R I block. It's over here. As Carol mentioned, there will actually be a number of residents that will stay on the site for a period while replacement housing is built. So Block A is where the current existing structures will be until replacement housing is built. So Block A will actually be the last to be developed. On the conceptual plan, we show office and hotel as well as a parking deck here on A. Jumping down actually to Block D is where the replacement housing is going to be built. So this is our first phase of vertical development. We're planning both a senior housing and family housing, um, buildings there, and once those are up and open is when residents will then be moved off of Block A, and Block A demolition would proceed. So in the immediate term, Block B, C, and D are what will be demolished first. Block B, which is here, is closest to St. Vincent's and Red Mountain Expressway in that interchange. And we show, um, retail here on the corner, a shared parking deck for all of the uses across Block B. Then we're planning on a, uh, medical office here in the corner with a hotel in orange. We have pocket parks planned throughout, surrounded by restaurants. I'm sorry? Okay, and then a green space, a large linear park to provide a buffer between the site and Red Mountain Expressway. Block C, down here in the southeast corner, has ground floor retail along the new Ninth Avenue, and then, um, office above with another small office building here, a shared parking deck in the center of the site, and a second phase of residential on the end of the site here. We've mentioned that this site has, um, plans for complete streets and transit-oriented development. Twenty-fourth will be maintained as a thoroughfare from across, from over the mountain communities into Birmingham. Um, we are going to be adding some medians in order to do some traffic calming measures as well as bike lanes, but it is going to maintain that thoroughfare through the site. Ninth Avenue, on the other hand, is more of a pedestrian scaled street. It's going to, um, enhance walkability and have, um, large, deep sidewalks that set back that really improve the, um, the pedestrian feel of the street, and then also provide us opportunities for outside dining. We've also mentioned that we're looking to add some transit stops to the area in order to help with this truly being a multimodal development. With that, does anybody have any questions?
Counselor Abbott, was that, um, sufficient enough on the presentation? Counselor Hoyt, um, before we go to the public, or? Do you need?
Yeah, I just think when we're showing something, we ought to actually show it, because there will be people watching who have no clue what we're talking about if we don't show them what we're talking about. My only questions are that, um, the only residential that will, that will be left on this, um, are in D and C?
Actually, yes. Yes, ma'am. D and C are planned residential now. A, we actually have this building planned as potentially either residential or hotel, um, based off of what makes sense for the site, knowing that A is going to be developed some years into the future, since it will be the last site that will remain in its existing state. Um, that could be a hotel, or if the site warrants more residential, it could be residential. So we're leaving that corner open to be either of those two uses.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Alright, thank you. Alright, yes, ma'am. Alright, real quick, just want to make sure, I think we, um, allowed the public to, uh, ask questions and didn't have any, uh, anyone, just want to make sure we state that for the record for items one, two, and four, so, um, Counselor Hoyt? Good morning.
Good morning, sir. Um, thank you.
Okay, good morning.
Yeah, could you all talk about, um, what is going to be the maximum, uh, units on there in, in terms of residential?
With the replacement housing?
Um, with the replacement housing, with the overall, uh, plan of the, uh, for the residential, residential piece, uh, for this site.
Carol, would you like to address that unit? Sure, sure. Um, counselor, we would like to say up to five hundred sixty units. Uh, we started out thinking it would be no more than two eighty replacement units and no more than two eighty market, two hundred eighty market rate units, but the market for, um, conventional housing has become saturated in the interim as we were getting to this point. So we are still evaluating how much conventional, uh, housing the market can support. So, you know, I would say we're pretty firm on, on the number of, uh, affordable housing that's coming to the site. What we're less clear about is the, uh, market rate housing, because so much has been built in Birmingham already, uh, that the market is, is absorbing, so if, if you will, um, we're gonna have to tell you more about that, uh, you know, in the near future.
I was just trying to.
That's not a firm answer.
Yeah, well, it's not, uh, but, you know, um, I was just trying to do a, a comparison in terms of, um, market rate versus affordable, and if, in fact, we are maximizing our efforts, uh, with affordable units for this particular, um, development.
Well, we want to have the ratio be no more than fifty-fifty affordable to market rate. And, and, but the demand and our commitment to the client, you know, and, and the urgency is to lead this project with, uh, replacement housing, and we'll have a large senior housing development, uh, in the Phase One, uh, as well, so, um, that's our commitment to H A B D as it aligns with their mission, and, and so we are leading with that. But, you know, there, we, right now, the conventional, uh, the demand for conventional is, is on the side of student housing, and we have not decided that this would be a location for student housing, so we, we just really have to, um, get started with our commitment to the Housing Authority and then, um, update you, you know, at, we'll, we'll update the council as much as you would like for us to, uh, as we, um, firm up, you know, because we can draw, we can draw the pictures and design the concepts, but then the deals have to come together, and right now, the market rate environment is.
Yeah, well, I understand that. Um, so you, you mentioned earlier, um, in your presentation, uh, about options, and could you expound on what are the options that you were referencing?
Is, is that the relocation options that the residents that were?
Right, yeah, I'm, I'm interested in that, and to see where, uh, and I know that you have, uh, surveillance, uh, as relates to, uh, relocation, so I'm just trying to see, uh, where are these people going?
Okay, I would like to defer to Christie Hilliard, who is here representing the Housing Authority. Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, council. Um, as Carol mentioned earlier, I'm Christie Hilliard, um, Real Estate Development Analyst, and, um, to you, Counselor Hoyt, we have been slow and deliberate and given our residents the opportunity to, um, choose from our options we have in our portfolio. Um, residents were given the right to return. They were also given opportunity to talk with our homeownership facilitator and rental assistance vouchers.
And what are those areas?
Which areas specifically?
And, and the ones that you're considering, um, in terms of the, the, the options of, of them, um, relocating?
Well, we have, those that had the right to return, they have the option to stay on-site in Block A. Um, they will remain in those public housing units. Um, we went through a long process, I think maybe about a year, year and a half, right, Carol? Where our residents were, had the opportunity to interview with their caseworkers, and they had options. Um, those who did not qualify for the voucher program or homeownership, they had options with our public housing units in our portfolio currently.
Okay, yeah, I, I guess I'm still not understanding, um, specifically, um, what are the choices that they have?
Oh, as far as?
And, 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 well, and, and, well, in terms of, um, you know, if they maintain in, in Birmingham, and I would think that most of these persons would, uh, be, uh, retained, uh, in Birmingham, so what, what areas specifically do you all, are y'all concentrating on?
Well, well, Counselor Hoyt, the vouchers, um, the rental assistance vouchers, they get to go out on the open market and just.
So, so how many, how many, well, well, that's what I need to hear. So how many vouchers, uh, are designated for these families?
Well, everyone had a choice of selecting a voucher, and it was by far the most popular choice, but we would probably have to get back to you with the specific breakdown, because the person who managed a relocation is not on the call this morning.
Why would you have that person on the call?
Well, they are in a HUD workshop, uh, primarily, and Christie's the project manager, so we, Christie, do, can we?
So I can, I can pull those numbers, um, Counselor Hoyt, if you just give me.
Yeah, cause I'm, I'm, and I, and I want my colleagues to understand that, uh, we just don't want to concentrate poverty. We want to deconcentrate it, and, and the only way for us to know that is the, by, by virtue of the relocation plan, and to make sure that these families are not going into areas already stricken by poverty. Because, you know, where they are now, have access to the hospital, have access to the grocery store, have access to, uh, medical care, the whole, the whole gamut. And so I just want to make sure that we doing our, uh, best, uh, to facilitate.
Counselor Hoyt, a good number of our residents did choose some of our incentive sites, so our preferred sites such as Park Place, um, Park at Sit and Drive, so housing, um, sites that are already in our portfolio, a good majority of them. Um, so let me pull down those numbers for you as it relates to those who may have taken the actual vouchers.
Two hundred, I, Christie, I can address Cindy. Hi, my name is Cindy Herrera, and I work with Birmingham Housing as well. Two hundred and twenty-four of the families, um, had a housing choice voucher where they went out and searched in the private market and utilized that voucher with the private landlord. Um, I, I do not have specifics as to what zip codes or what, what areas they went to at this moment, but obviously that's something we can always get back to you. And, um, the remaining of the families, um, eighty-eight families are remaining on Block A, and then the balance of the families move to other public housing communities within H A B D's portfolio, sir.
Okay, uh, that's great. That's what I need to hear. Um, and, and the other thing I wanted to, you mentioned, um, you know, the, the site, developing the site, how, how many trees, because I don't see anything that designate trees remaining, and so I'm just kind of, uh, you know, I'm like Miss Abbott on the trees, and I kind of want to save the trees if we can. Uh, so is there a plan to save the trees? I mean, I mean, it's important. I don't care where it is. It's important. Trees are very important.
Yes, sir. This is Becky, again, with Corporate Realty Development. Um, given where these, um, green areas are located, we are absolutely going through a survey to see what exists already within, for current of those green areas that can stay throughout the site. The best opportunity is here along Red Mountain Expressway, given some of the grading that has to occur across the site. Um, if you're familiar with the development now, you know that there are some retaining walls, and there's a lot chain across the site from one to the other. And when the areas under Block B, C, and D are demolished, there is going to be a large grading effort taking the high side, B and C, to help infill some of the low side of D. So there's going to be a large amount of mass grading across the middle of the site here and here, but along the edge, that's our best chance for remaining trees in what will be along linear.
Okay, so you are going to raise the site, because I think there's some flooding that takes place around, I guess, is it Tenth Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Around that area, and, uh, maybe, I don't know what street comes in between that, uh, uh, where, where you have C, the street there, I think some flooding, uh, takes place there.
There is, there's a lot of water that runs off the site this way.
Right, right.
Down to Southwest. So yes, we're, we're, have a civil engineer, shole engineering, whose office is actually just down here, so they are very well aware of it. Um, and, and we're going to be carefully helping that flooding situation.
Okay, so good. Alright, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President? Mr. President, can you hear me?
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I can hear you now.
Yeah, the, um, Highland Park Neighborhood President has been trying to get in, and I don't know whether she's made it or not.
Yeah, no, that's what we were, I was, I was on mute. I was attempting, I was speaking that, uh, wanted to, uh, allow the, uh, the neighborhood, uh, their three minutes to speak. Um, so is, is the neighborhood president available at this time, Ms. Abbott?
Well, she said she's, is she there? Are you here?
Good morning. Good morning. How are you? Good morning. How you doing?
Good.
Good, good. You can just state your name, uh, just so we'll have it for the, for our records, and how are you?
Sure. My name is Elizabeth Sanfilippo. I'm the president of the Highland Park Neighborhood Association. Um, just wanted to speak briefly on this project. We really appreciate the developers' transparency and them coming to our neighborhood Zoom meetings and making these presentations and getting our input. Um, we think that's a great way to go about developments like this. Um, even though it's not in our neighborhood, we are adjacent to it. Um, our, our one concern is the height of two hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, so we, we wanted to just reiterate our request for a hundred-foot height restriction on the site, and then if, if a hotel or something wants to go higher than that, then they could come back and request that variance, but, um, in the immediate area and the fact that it abuts a residential area, there's, there's nothing in, in the immediate area that is two hundred and twenty-five feet. Um, so that, that would be our only, uh, caveat or request. Thank you.
Okay, um, are you the only, uh, res- resident from Highland, or are there others, and we might have dismissed them, or are you speaking on? It's just, you're just the only one speaking, or do we need to recognize any others?
Um, I believe that I'm, I'm the only resident.
I just wanted to make, I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay, alrighty, um, we'll now go back to, um, Counsel Abbott, did you have, um, questions, concerns?
Yeah, one other question. On the, on the, the site development map, it shows some, there's an orange striped building that I don't see in the key. Is that the hotel location?
Near as Red Mountain.
It looks like orange and yellow stripes.
Okay, this is orange and yellow stripes, because this is the building that could go in one of two directions, either to multifamily or hotel, so it's cross-hatched with those two colors. The orange that designates hotel, and the yellow that designates multifamily, so they used a, a crosshatch to show that it could be either or.
Okay, and then the other orange that isn't, isn't striped is that point four one acres. Is that also a hotel? Or is that a hotel? It's not striped, so it would be a hotel.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, you know, my only other comment, and I appreciate Councilor Hoyt's comment about the trees because, you know, stripping that site naked is going to be traumatic, I think, for a number of us who care about trees, but I guess I realize that it is a sloping site. But the other thing is I am in support of the neighborhood's request about the hundred-foot height limit. Because this is adjacent to a residential neighborhood, and although there are people who are under the impression that having a two hundred and twenty-five-foot building sticking up here would be a fine thing, it actually would be a real intrusion because there, except for St. Vincent's, which is on a hill, there are no tall buildings in the, the immediate area. There are some down on Twentieth Street, but that's not the immediate area. So no one in a residence wants to look out their window and see this, you know, tower sticking up. We already have those problems on Highland Avenue and have experienced the complaints. So I just want to say that I am in support of the neighborhood's request for a hundred-foot height limit. And I think the current height's what, about forty-five feet, maybe?
Excuse me, sorry to interrupt, but Rob Burton would like to speak.
Mr. Burton has called into the meeting. If you could please press star three so that we're able to find you. We are not currently seeing your name listed.
But give us your number so we can track it that way, yeah.
Again, if Mr. Burton has called in by telephone, we need for you to press star three so that we can find you and recognize you to speak.
What we'll do is we'll, we'll let some other people speak, and we'll, as soon as he comes in, let us know that he'll be next up. So are there other questions, Council Abbott, that you had at this time? Or do you want to go on, see if other council members have questions?
No, I'm, I'm good. Those were my, my two things, was just understanding what we're looking at. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Are those the members of the council?
As we're waiting on. I had my hand.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, well, you know, given the, the topography of the, the site, and given that there's some natural buffers that aligns the site, I don't know why we would limit them to a hundred feet. I just don't know why we would do that. And it seems to me that this is going to be a premier site. And quite frankly, the nearest resident, residence is, is quite a ways from the site itself. As a matter of fact, the site kind of sits down on the Tenth Avenue side. And so given the terrain of the site, that I would doubt very seriously that anybody sitting at home would, would be, be affected by the height of two hundred and fifty feet. I just, I don't see that happening, because most of those houses around there, if they have houses, they are businesses, and they're not necessarily where someone lives. And then you got the buffer of the freeway that runs in the back of the site. And so, you know, we're going to develop the site, we need to maximize its, its efforts. And so I'm, you know, I'm inclined to support what staff said is, is in, is in compliance. And so I'm just, you know, putting my two cents in there. I just don't see the, the intrusion of the site in terms of residential. I don't see it.
I agree with, I, Councilor Hoyt, I agree with Stan. There is no intrude. Councilor Hoyt is right. I think his team's words are done.
Okay, all righty. Are the other council members, I think we're gonna, at this point, go to Mr. Burton. I think he, is he available via phone? We're going to give him three minutes to speak.
Hello?
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning.
Fine, good. You have three, state your name and, and for the record, and you have three minutes, please.
Absolutely. My name is Rob Burton. I am one of the South Side Community Officers. I just had a question. I remember when this was being worked on, I guess it would have been maybe around twenty eighteen, the residents of the community had been requesting a community benefits agreement to try and help with making sure that anybody who lives there would not get displaced and to help provide good housing for folks, since we have a, a section eight housing available, or at least good section eight housing. Has there been any progress on this community benefits agreement between South Side redevelopment and any residents?
Okay, Ms. Clark, we're going to ask that they respond back to your question.
Mr. President, I would just offer that, and that H A B D is regulated by HUD and has followed the guidelines of a Section eighteen demo, demolition and disposition application. And it does provide protections for residents and, you know, gives them the option to purchase the property and, and certain other things that were, you know, a part of, of those rules. And, and I don't know of any other rules that were, that were adopted, you know, to govern this process. So I'm not aware of anything additional. I, I do feel like we did some things with H A B D to engage the community that, and, and we continue to have a responsibility to create economic opportunities for residents through the Section three rules that HUD has established. So, you know, those commitments to residents are ongoing throughout this process, but I'm not aware of any other overlay, like what Mr. Burton is, is mentioning.
Okay, so just for clarification, the position of South Side redevelopment is that you did what you legally need to do but are not working on a community benefits agreement with the residents. Is that correct?
This is, this property is owned by the Housing Authority of the Birmingham District, and so we, they are our client, and we are doing whatever they ask us to do within, you know, the negotiated construct of our arrangement. So it doesn't preclude what you're speaking about, but it is not a part of our agreement at this point.
Right. Well, the only statement then that I have to say today is since the residents requested a community benefits agreement of South Side Redevelopment Company and Housing Authority, I would just request that parties go to the table to sign, you know, work on an agreement before any votes are taken on today. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The council members that.
Go ahead.
Okay, Council, we're going to go to Council.
I, I, I yield the president to, to, I go after Councilor Hoyt. Go right ahead, Councilman.
Yeah, I was going to say that any such agreement at that point can always be revisited. But I think the, the main thing here is the construct of the site itself. And so if we, you know, have the Housing Authority word, develop a word that they would go back and revisit what Mr. Rob has, has dictated, then I think that's something that, that can be done through a public hearing, some sort of that nature, because I think it, you know, we do need to maximize whatever efforts we can to, you know, to, to make sure we've done everything we need to do for these residents. That would just be my suggestion.
Okay, all right. Mr. Hillier?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you to all of you for, for this. I know this project has been going on for quite some time. First of all, I'd like to commend you for your community engagement and the way you have gone about engaging the community. I like the fact that it's so accessible to hospitals, to bus stops, and a lot of thought has been given on the housing apart, part as well as the developers' part, and the way you've worked and kept me informed over the last couple of years that I've been on the council has just been commended. And I, I really would like to see this project move forward as, as fast as we can. And hopefully we could take a vote on it today. I think would be very admirable to move forward. There's a lot of work that has gone into this particular project, and I think at this point, we could continue to drag it out for, for quite some time. But as it is now, we've seen the drawings, we, we've seen where the residents have gone. We, we've seen that there are the inclusiveness of, of the group and the organization and on the part of the Housing Authority. And I just want to commend the Housing Authority for their hard work, for the efforts that they have put forward and looking out for the constituents that they represent, and the people have had a multitude of choices. And I think that's a great thing, but for the ones who have decided to stay, I like where they are located. I like where A is now and, and the movement of things that'll be going on. You know, I see these type of developments in surrounding cities like Atlanta, Mississippi now has moved so far ahead of us in the things that they are doing. And we are just at a point where Birmingham has to grow. We're going to have to work with, with private and public enterprise to take things forward. And as Chair of Economic Development, I, I, I just salute the people that has been involved and bring this to the forefront, and hopefully my colleagues will see the need to make this happen today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you. Are there others that have not spoken yet on the council? Yes, sir. How are you, Dr. Quinn?
Yes, sir. Doing well. Just wanted to make a brief comment and, and say that, you know, this is, of course, a project that precedes, precedes my time on the council. However, I, I have been very involved in talking both to H A B D and S D C. Becky and Carol have, you know, checked in with me frequently to give me updates and, you know, answer any concerns that we have. We are also engaging with the residents to outtown independently to, to get their feedback and make sure that we're hearing from their perspective of how things are going. And I've been, you know, quite pleased with the process. I know a lot of residents are, were really excited to actually get the opportunity at that voucher program. You know, many have elected to return to the site, and I know my office and the mayor's office in particular have been, you know, really concerned that all of the, the folks that wanted to return to the site were able to do so. And I believe H A B D and, and South Side Development Corporation have, you know, made every effort to make that happen and are making it happen. So just want to say that, you know, I think this process has, has been handled well. It's been a very long time coming. As I said, it, this project. You know, the, the, just, you know, this, there's been a lot of considerations in getting to this point. And, you know, what's before us today is a rezoning case. And with what is being presented, I am happy to support it. Thank you.
Mr. President, my last comment, my last comment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, you know, I'm, I'm not sure what all South Side Development has done. But it's HUD's practice, it's the Housing Authority's practice, that these developers sit down with the resident and imagine what the site could, could look like or whatever. I know when I worked for the Housing Authority, it was a different group, but we sat down and did these sessions. And I think Dr. O'Quinn may have been a part of the latter sessions that we had. And, you know, there were plenty of public meetings around the, this, you know, the, the whole plan of redevelopment. Those redeveloping, South Town is not a new nuance. It's something that we've been planning for a long time and haven't worked for the Housing Authority. And as a development administrator, that there's always this element of engagement, and, and we do that for about a year. Because you really, you got to be able to document and to, that you've had these meetings with the residents. And so I, I'm almost sure, because it's been a minute since I worked there, but I'm almost sure that this developer would, would have had to have had those engagement meetings where they, you know, share their plans and, and get some, some kind of consensus summarily about the site.
I'm good. Okay, all right. All righty. Any other speakers? So we're going to be ready to vote on items one, two, and four. Mr. Clark.
Do we need to move the item?
So we have a motion already.
Yeah, I think it's already before, so.
Call for the question.
Mr. President.
Yes, hold up, hold up, Councilor Hoyt. Yes, ma'am, Councilor Abbott.
I wanted to offer a substitute motion that we approve the project as shown with a one-hundred-foot height limit on the buildings, and they can come back if they get someone who wants to build something taller.
No, they don't need to do that. They don't need to do that.
That's my motion. And people do live in the block adjacent to this property, to the south and southeast. So it is not true that people don't live nearby.
But it provides a natural buffer because of the, the construct of the site itself. Miss Abbott, the elevation of the site on the back end is down. So the intrusion of the, of the resident around, they may not even see half the stuff because of the, of the terrain of the, of the, of the, the layout of, of that, that particular part of the property.
You're right. They'll see a two hundred and twenty-five-foot building. That's what they'll see.
Yeah, I, I, that's what they say, going to try to save some of them trees. So some of the tree going to take about a hundred feet of that.
In your dreams.
All right, all right. Okay. Mr. Clark, let's deal with the motions that are before us.
Did we get a second on the hundred-feet limit? I don't know.
I, I moved it. Yeah. Oh, oh, on the, on the.
Okay, well, we, we're at the main motion.
Move the item. I mean, it's all ready for the question.
Okay, so this is on the one, two, passage of one, items one, two, and four. Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
That's correct.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Abbott. Councilmember Abbott.
Epstein.
Councilmember Hillier.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Resounding yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes, yes.
Councilmember Smithman is still up. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
President Parker.
Aye. Okay, those items pass, one, two, and four. Okay, next item, Mr. Clark, please.
Back up to item three, I guess.
Yes, sir.
Okay, item three. An ordinance to further mid-zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, PACE number Z A C 2020-35, to change zone district boundaries from M1 Light Industrial District to M U D Mixed Use Downtown District in order to allow for an office retail and restaurant uses filed by Jamie Watkins, representing the owner, 8 C P T D G Avenue A L L C, for property located at 2300 through 2312 First Avenue South, situated in the northeast quarter of Section 36 Township 17 South Range 3 West in the hearing of our supporters. This is the second reading of this item. This is also a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item, they do so by joining the meeting of the full council using this link, the link provided on the screen as well as on the hard copy of the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002, and the access code is 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
The item.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
Okay, Ms. Gambrell, good morning again.
Yes, sir. This is Tim Gambrell. I serve as the chief planner for the city of Birmingham. This is the A C 2020-35, and the proposed use is office retail and restaurant uses. The subject property is 1.73 acres and currently zoned M1. Abutting the subject property to the north is zoned M1 Light Industrial District. To the south of the property is zoned M1 Light Industrial District. To the east of the property is zoned M2 Heavy Industrial District, and west of the property is zoned a combination of M1 and mixed-use downtown. The applicant's proposal, proposed plans for the hardwood located on the northeast corner of First Avenue South and 23rd Street is a historic adaptive reuse redevelopment of 110-year-old zero-line, block line building into a mixed-use project consisting of office, restaurant, and retail space. Currently, the building is 30,000 square feet on mostly two, of, mostly two-story office space at the front of the building. The redevelopment plan would expand floor area to 63,000 square feet with roughly 58,000 of that being leasable over a maximum of three stories. Office space would take up approximately 48,000 square feet of the leasable area with a restaurant, retail uses in the balance of the 10,000 square feet. Expansion of the floor area will take place within the existing historic building shell, subject to the rebuilding of certain features, accommodations for building uses. The building core will include new floors, elevator stairs, common area bathrooms, exterior patio, roof deck, and balconies. Mayor is working with both neighborhood and the city of Birmingham to formally 23rd Street and redevelop Powell Avenue from its current state to create roughly 150 parking spaces immediately adjacent to the property. These additional spaces would effectively handle the parking load placed on the neighborhood by the hardwood property. The hardwood is planned as a pedestrian-friendly development, takes advantage of its front-door community rotary trail, offering pedestrians friendly features, the showers, and the common area office restrooms, bicycle parking, convenient new parking for both tenants and patrons, pedestrians on the trail, and easy pedestrian access to the building via one of the three entrance ways directly on the public right-of-way on either First Avenue or 23rd and Powell Avenue. The city's long-range land use plan identifies the property as light industrial. While the land use is not consistent, the area is in transition. Recently, a similarly situated property two blocks east of the site was rezoned for multifamily development. Both of these sites are taking advantage of their location being adjacent to the rotary trail. The development will be walkable and will be a great fit in the area as a mixed-use development. Considering these facts, the proposed rezoning request is consistent with land use and development trends in the area. As a result of the South Side Framework Plan, these trends have been further evaluated, and the plan proposes the subject site to be assigned a designation of mixed-use high. Therefore, the proposed zoning is somewhat consistent with the proposed amendment to the city's long-range land use plan. Parking spaces are not required in the mixed-use downtown. Where parking is provided in the mixed-use downtown, all remaining requirements of this article shall apply. However, the applicant is proposing to create roughly 150 parking spaces immediately adjacent to the proposed property. The Five Point South Neighborhood Association held a special call meeting on January 5, 2021 to review the proposed project and voted to recommend approval for the zoning request. Their vote was five approve and zero to deny. This property is located within South Side-North Side Framework Plan area. The framework plan for this area is in progress, and the implementation committee has not been formed. The zoning advisory committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on Tuesday, February 16, 2021, to review the applicant's rezoning request and voted to recommend approval of the proposed zoning request. Planning and zoning committee met at its regular scheduled meeting on Wednesday, February 17, 2021, to review the applicant's rezoning request and voted to recommend approval of the proposed rezoning request, and that concludes the staff report.
Mr. President, I'm of approval.
Second. Okay, all right. The item is before us. Ms. Jamie. Available, the, representing the owner.
Mr. President, this is Eric Morrison. I'm the Director of Development with Bear Properties.
Okay. Good, good morning. You want to give us some more information on the project?
Sure, be happy to. I'm gonna, I don't have the option, I don't think, to share my screen. It's kind of clouded out.
We're gonna need that information.
Uh, now I can, yes.
Okay, you're good, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Let me get to the right screen here. Screen three, there we go. Everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Good morning, everyone. Like I said, I am Eric Morrison, Director of Development with Bear Properties, here to talk to you about the hardwood. The hardwood is a 110-year-old historical redevelopment project located on the rotary trail at 23rd Street and First Avenue South. As you can see here on the screen where it's pointed out, it fronts directly onto the rotary trail. The rotary trail comes to grade right in front of the building. As most of you, I'm sure, know, the trail kind of dips up and down and up, comes right to grade here, right at our corner. This is sort of the east trailhead of Rotary Trail where the hardwood is located, and therefore, due to its proximity to Rotary Trail and the fact that the trail comes to grade right at our front door, and just given the overall kind of theme of the neighborhood, we have designed this project to be extremely pedestrian-friendly. Like I said, the project's 100, the building is 110 years old. It's a historical building. For the last 50 years, it was home to the fabricated and prefabricated steel processing operations of the hardwood company. The first part of its life back in the 1920s, it was home to a grain and seed warehouse, then a ginatorial supply company, and then a soft grain company, but the hardwood company or its predecessors have always had a presence on the property since the 1920s. As you guys can see, it's a very cool and flexible canvas on which to design a historical renovation project. You'll see some overhead cranes there in the upper right and the middle bottom pictures. We're planning to preserve some of those overhead cranes, as many of these artifacts as possible, to be reused in the redevelopment and help tell the story of the history of the building and the property. It's located in an opportunity zone, and it will be financed with opportunity zone equity as well as federal and state historic tax credits. As you can all see, the building is a great canvas, but it needs a new life. Here's a rendering of what it will mostly look like once it's completed. As mentioned earlier, it's a mixed-use project, office space and restaurant or retail. It, like I said, will be pedestrian-friendly. As you can see here, hardscape improvements are planned on First Avenue South, 23rd Street, and Powell Avenue, new sidewalks, wider streetscapes, pedestrian lighting, and then tying back to the pedestrian-friendly nature of the project, we will have showers as part of the common area restrooms for the office tenants. So if you want to bike or walk to work in the summertime, you could shower and then get ready for work, as well as bike lockers. We are also going to be going for WELL certification on this project. We have just kicked off our construction drawing process, and our goal of WELL certification is part of that. For those of you who are not familiar with WELL, WELL is a certification program which certifies the environment of the building for its occupants in a similar way that LEED certifies the environmental friendliness of the actual building itself. This building will also have several green features, namely amongst them are solar panels. So we will have solar panels on the roof, which will help to power anywhere from 10% to 30% of the office and common area electrical usage for this building. We are also working with ADECA at the state level to try to get a program called PACE up and running, first in Jefferson County, then statewide, so we're leading that charge. PACE would allow us to, it would be a financing vehicle for the solar panels. Good news is that we have backup plans if PACE does not come to fruition in order to make those solar panels a reality. This is a $24 million project with a projected $51 million in local and state GDP contribution. 437, excuse me, 431 jobs will be supported during construction, and 347 jobs will be supported during ongoing operations once the building's open. Shifting here to the next slide, this is kind of the centerpiece of the design of the building, and what we're considering our main entrance. Going back a slide, that's where I'm circling right here on the screen. It's on 23rd Street. There's an existing large opening in the building, and we're going to be reusing that large opening to be the kind of the centerpiece and focal point of the development, what we're calling the indoor-outdoor plaza. It's a main entry point into the building. It's where all three of the, excuse me, all two of the uses come together, both in a vertical and horizontal fashion, as well as all three entrances to the building sort of have a confluence here right at this indoor plaza. It's a gathering space for the building tenants, for restaurant patrons. It's also where the main elevator core is to the office space above. So like I said, it really does offer a true mixture of uses, both vertically and horizontally. This is something that we fought very hard to preserve with the Alabama Historical Commission. We thought that it was a very important piece of the property, not only for, you know, the mixture of uses and the, and the sharing of space, but also that pedestrian-friendly nature of the project, and this really being the main entrance coming in off of Rotary Trail and then onto 23rd Street. See, this is kind of a cut-through, not looking through that same spot off 23rd Street, off the west side of the building. As you can see, the mixture of uses, two levels of office space above restaurant and retail on the ground floor. This is the inside of that main plaza, and then as you head east through the building, you'll have two floors of office, two floors of office, and then one floor of office. You can see that here in plan view. This is the first floor, second floor, and the third floor. And then this is a rendering looking at the building from the north, looking from Powell Avenue. As you can see, once again, the mixture of uses, you got two floors of office above, and then office next to the ground floor restaurant, which would sit up above Powell Avenue, outdoor dining, roll outdoors, you know, very walkable, lots of options here, ties into the hardscape, ties into the fabric of the neighborhood. And then, as mentioned earlier, about the improvements to 23rd Street and Powell Avenue, we have begun conversations with economic development about how to improve Powell Avenue and 23rd Street, not only for the benefit of this project, but for the neighborhood overall. And if anyone has any questions, I would, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. For giving us information from the developer, from the client. Are there any questions from the public? And, Miss, yes, do we have anyone that signed up for public, from the public?
We do not see anyone, counselor.
Thank you. This time, then, we'll entertain any questions from the counselors. Any counselors having questions regarding this project?
Madam Protem.
Yes, sir.
Comment, then a question. This, I think that this project's going to be a great impetus for this area. I know that directly across the street from that, there's no condos going up, and it's good to see all of the effects from Rotary Trail over the past few years, bringing all of the new developments and economic development to that area of the city. And so I just want to voice my support for this. I think it's very well done, and I really like how they have made a very intentional effort to, instead of just bulldoze something down and throw up, you know, three or four-story apartments, they've made a very intentional effort to, to have the street cleaned at that location.
Yes. Mr. Hillier. Thank you. I'm not sure, Mr. Hillier, do you need to mute your phone or mute your, mute your audio? Thank you, Mr. Williams. Any other comments or questions from the council, and I'm not sure if that individual was trying to speak from the public, but just let us know.
Madam Protem, this is Counselor O'Quinn.
Yes, sir. Dr. Quinn, go ahead.
Yeah, so I just want to reiterate the contribution from Rotary for the Rotary Trail. You know, they, that is proving to be a transformative project, and I applaud them for not only, you know, making that contribution to our city, but their continuing efforts to make sure that the Rotary Trail is maintained and secure. I also want to thank Goodwin Mills Kaywood and Jane Reed Ross for their involvement in that project. Again, you know, it's turned out wonderfully, and Ms. Ross, her skill is, you know, evident in the outcome of what has, you know, been a transformative project there. Also want to speak briefly to the Powell Avenue side of this project. As many folks who've been around for a long time or may be aware that the original proposal for the railroad park was really a linear park that stretched on 14th Street all the way to Sloss Furnace, and, you know, there is currently a gap really from the Rotary Trail down to Sloss Furnace, especially on that Powell Avenue side, and this project makes a incremental improvement along that corridor currently on that side of the building. There's a lot of overgrowth. Powell Avenue is nothing more than just, you know, a strip of gravel really at current, and so this will represent a significant improvement along that Powell Avenue corridor that will bring people to that space and activate it. So this project has my full support on a variety of different levels. I commend the developer for the way that they're approaching this and for trying to do some innovative things in the process. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the council?
Madam President.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Abbott, go ahead.
Yes, I wanted to ask about the improvements to Powell Avenue. Is the intention that Powell will retain its status as public right-of-way, or is there some intention that this property will be acquired for the project?
Sure, I'm happy to speak to that. Let me pull up a drawing. It may help us see all that. So if everybody can see my screen, where I'm pointing to down here on the bottom, Counselor Abbott, is this is the hardwood building, and then just north of us, obviously, is Powell Avenue to left is 23rd Street. So we are starting conversations with the city, with So we are starting conversations with the city, with economic development, with engineering and other folks to basically bring Powell Avenue up to a level of service. Currently, Powell Avenue, let me, sorry, get some pictures here. Here we go. This is what Powell Avenue currently looks like. So here's the Hardwick Building on the left-hand side. And we're looking west here on Powell Avenue. So this is Powell Avenue right here. So what we're trying to do is basically make Powell Avenue a passable roadway, just like it is when you go west of here, when you go west of Twenty-second Street. So our plan to do that is to work with the city and work with the railroad to basically get the property ownership rights figured out. It is our understanding, through a copious amount of research, that the railroad has ownership rights here in Powell Avenue. So there'll be a sort of an intricate working out of ownership rights between the railroad and the city, as well as the project, to make Powell Avenue a fully functioning passable roadway from Twenty-second Street, where I'm pointing here at the top of the screen, through the intersection of Twenty-third Street and Powell Avenue. So you have a fully passable roadway here. It's a public roadway that will allow access to the rear of these buildings and then up to Twenty-third Street. We would be seeking to get a vacation from the city and then a quick claim from the railroad to have this portion of Powell Avenue directly behind our building, which leads to a dead end, to be vacated and made part of our property, vacated and then quick claimed and made part of our property. And it would become additional parking to serve our property. In conjunction with that is, would be improvement to all this land up here, which is currently railroad land. And this would be made into, this would be improved into parking for our project, as well as the Creature Project two doors to the west of us.
Thank you. Mrs. Abbott, does that answer your, give you the detail you were looking for, answer your question?
It does. It makes me sad that all those trees are going to have to come down for parking, but I realize people bring their cars with them.
Ma'am, I hear you. And, you know, we, obviously we'll have a landscape plan as part of our improvements, which will include plenty of trees and frankly, probably better trees than what are there now.
Yeah, you may be right there. Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
You're welcome.
All right, thank you. I don't see any raised hands or any other. That profile came up?
Madam, Protem.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Hilliard.
Yes, I just want to say I'm just so pleased with the way that they've gone about constructing this and the way that they're going to line those new trees up. I know that makes our president, I'm, our council colleague, Ms. Abbott, very happy that there will be better trees than the ones they had before. And so she's got me excited about these trees and I think that it's a lot of thought has gone into this project and I'm very pleased with the way it goes. So let's, I'm ready to move forward.
Thank you very much. Alicia, the host, if you would mute everyone, please, if we can, getting some background. Thank you very much. I believe we've had opportunity to hear from the public, as well as the counselors. And I think if you, I just wanted to comment that I am happy to see that this project is one of our remaining or part of some of our projects that have come under Opportunity Zone. Using that as a means of foring this property, so, and this project. So I'm glad to hear that. They haven't had so much about how those projects have taken place. So glad to hear that this Opportunity Zone project. If I don't have any other questions, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. I believe it's been properly moved and seconded. And now we've finished our discussion, we'll call for the vote, Mr. Clerk.
All right. Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt. Counselor Member Hoyt. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Member Smithman is still out, okay. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
I'm sorry, last, I forgot you were cheering right now. Counselor President Parker. Okay, my apologies, ma'am.
And Mr. Hilliard, he muted or he's just not present for the vote? Just want to give him.
No, I'm here. I said aye.
I have.
Sorry.
Aye. Hilliard is aye.
All right. Thank you, then that vote passes. Thank you all very much. Mr. Clerk, we go to the next item?
Okay, one second. I could have sworn it did. So just for the record here, let me see, I have Counselor Member, President Parker's out, Smithman is out. And I think Counselor Member Hoyt as well, for that item, so. All right, so we're going to, looks like item number five? Yes, item five, a resolution relative to the application of A-1 Daiquiri Bar LLC for a lounge retail liquor class one license to be used at A-1 Daiquiri Bar, 1401 Third Avenue West, Suite 102 Birmingham, in the hearing of our parties. Again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on the screen or on the paper copy distributed. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002. The access code is 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
Madam Protem, on this item, I'm requesting that we send this back to Public Safety. The original, when we originally heard this item, it was understood that they were going to be able to meet the zoning requirements. That we were informed this morning that they have in fact not been able to meet zoning requirements and they need to be heard again at Public Safety. So I'm making a motion that we send this item back to Public Safety.
Yes. Clerk.
Okay, so I have Counselor Williams for the motion and Counselor Hilliard for the second. All right, Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt. Counselor Member Hoyt. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Member Smithman. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor President Protem Alexander. I did it again.
That's okay.
Counsel, Counselor President Parker, he's out. Counsel, President Protem Alexander.
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am.
So that item passes. Thank you. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
All right, let's go to item six. A resolution relative to the application of Argana Nori Asaguna Incorporated for a restaurant retail liquor license to be used at Omni, Omni, 2808 Seventh Avenue Suite 17, 117 Birmingham, in the hearing of our parties. Same situation for public hearing. Item, any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided on screen or on your paper copy. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. And the audio conference number is 14156550002. The access code is 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right. Item is before you, Madam President.
Right, Mr. Williams, you'll take this one over. This is the.
Sure. All the counselors were emailed this morning and a digital copy of the neighborhood forms, even though it's in the package, just to make sure that everybody's on the same page. This item did pass the, the different, different areas like police, fire, et cetera, zoning. And there is a member of the public, Ms. Garner, will you please let me know that would like to speak on this? Having nobody speak, is there a member of the council that would like to speak to this? Hearing nobody, I think we're ready for the vote.
Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt. Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Member Smithman. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counselor President Parker. Counsel, Counselor President Protem Alexander.
Aye. That motion passed. Next item.
All right, should be item seven.
Hey, Mr. Clerk, before you read all the contact and all this stuff, this item actually, the applicant has canceled the event, so.
You want to withdraw it?
I would like to withdraw it before you have, I'll save your voice a little bit.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir. So next would be item eight. Item seven is withdrawn.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Now the next item, number eight.
Yes, ma'am. One second, so I can note that. Item eight, a resolution relative to the application of Agape House for the Incorporated for renewal of an annual bingo permit to be used at 260 West Valley Avenue, Suite A Birmingham, on Mondays, Thursdays, Fridays, Saturdays and Sundays of each calendar week, in the hearing of our parties. Again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council. Using the link provided on your screen or on the paper copy, please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002. And the access code is 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second. All right, item is before you.
All right, Madam Protem, this item is an annual permit that we have traditionally issued to Agape House every single year. They also meet the requirements by donating police fire and all the other requirements that the city has made. Any member of the, like Ms. Garner, that wishes to speak to this item? Hearing nobody, is there any member of the council that has a comment or question on this item? Hearing nobody, it's back to you, Madam Protem.
Thank you. Let's go ahead and call for the vote, please, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
Upstate.
Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Give me one second. Counselor Member Smithman still out. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods. Counselor Member Woods. Counsel, Counsel President Parker. Counsel, President Protem Alexander.
Aye. That item passes. Next item, please.
Okay, should be item number nine. A resolution relative to the application of Robert Hollis for a towing service license to be used at On Call Towing, 3502 Eminence Cliff Drive, Birmingham, to operate four wreckers on the streets of Birmingham. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, Madam Protem, this item also meets the respective requirements, mainly the requirement for PD and BPD has recommended this item. Anybody, Ms. Garner, about to speak to this item? Hearing nobody, are there any members of the council that would like to speak to this item? Hearing nobody, it is back to you.
Thank you very much. Hearing no discussion. Can you call for the vote, please?
All right, Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
Upstate.
Counselor Member O'Quinn.
Yes.
Counselor Member Smithman. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel President Parker. Counsel, Counsel President Alexander.
Aye. That item passes. Next item, please.
Looks like we go to item number 10. Item 10, a resolution assenting to the vacation of 308 square feet of airspace along Second Avenue South. That's between Sixteenth Street South and Seventeenth Street South. And 3,007 square feet of alley right of way along Seventeenth Street South. And that's between Second Avenue South and Third Avenue South, located at 201 16th Street South, 1621 and 1625 Second Avenue South, on behalf of Red Mountain Theater Property Company LLC, Red Corner LLC owners, so that the developer can construct balconies on the proposed apartment building in the hearing of our party. Case number S U B 2020-70. Again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council using the link provided. Also, the link provided on the paper copy. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002. And the access code is 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, item is before you.
All right, thank you very much. As said, this is a public hearing. If we could start first with the developer or the owners to provide us more information about the project? Or wait a minute, the city needs to, does this Mr. Cambril needs to speak to this first? It's not zoning. Okay, so do we have anyone, any of the owners or the developers here to talk about the project? Do any, does anyone have any questions? We don't have anyone here to speak to the item. I'm not sure far as developers or owners. What is the pleasure of the council? If you have any, we don't have anyone to address our question.
Could we delay this?
Mr. White, yes, sir?
Can we delay this item for a week until we can get some understanding from the developer?
And how much time would you ask for that delay? One week, Mr. White?
Just one week, one week.
All right. Is there a second then to delay this for one week? Second.
For the delay, Counselor Member Abbott.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hilliard.
Aye.
Counselor Member Hoyt.
Yes.
Counselor Member O'Quinn. Counselor Member Smithman still out. Counselor Member Williams.
Aye.
Counselor Member Woods.
Aye.
Counsel, Counsel President Parker. Counsel, Counsel President Alexander.
Aye. So we've just moved for a one-week delay on that item. Thank you very much. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 11 should be next. A resolution assenting to the vacation of 6,339 square feet of right-of-way. It is located parallel to and between 24th Street South and Red Mountain Expressway, perpendicular to and between Ninth Court South and 10th Avenue South, located at 2547 and 2557 Ninth Avenue South. Now, on behalf of the Housing Authority of Birmingham District owners, so that the owner can consolidate property in the hearing of our parties, that's case number S U B 2020-79. And again, this is a public hearing item. Any persons who wish to speak for or against this item may do so by joining the meeting of the full council, using the link provided on the screen on the paper copy of the agenda. Please use the hand raise function on WebEx to request to speak to this agenda item. The audio conference number is 14156550002. The access codes 1871044543. If you are calling via telephone, please press star three to request to speak to this agenda item. Motion, please.
Move the item.
Second.
All right, the item is before you.
Thank you. Item has been moved and properly seconded. We'll start with the discussion. So I'd like to ask, is there anyone here representing the Housing Authority that can just give us more information about this project?
Good morning, everyone. This is Kristy Hilliard again, um, the development project analyst. I do have our co-developers here representing that will speak to our block F, uh, Vacation Alleyway, as we stated, in our position to consolidate the site uh, for economic redevelopment of South Town Court. I'll go ahead and open the floor to Carol Clark.
Yes, and Kristy, thank you. Um, Joey Brainer from Shoal Engineering should be on the line to uh, present, it's a, it's a re-survey of property.
Is that individual on the line?
I, I would expect him to be, but, um, because it's a replating of property case of right of way, so he should be on the line to present on behalf of the owner.
All right.
I don't see him on the line. This is sending, um, Cindy, however, which Jay P D, um, and Kristy, we can present this, I think.
Thanks.
This is basically the, the fee to vacate, um, what was Ninth, Ninth, Ninth Court. Um, and the Housing Authority has property on both sides, and as part of the redevelopment that was approved earlier, um, we would be vacating this alley, and there's a fee related to it of eleven thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and nineteen cents. The Housing Authority is asking for that fee to be waived in this action.
Cindy, I believe that may be item twelve, the fee waiver request, and that this is a vacation of the right of way.
Yeah, yeah, for vacating, my apologies. We're asking for it to be vacated because as part of the redevelopment, that site would be combined. And, um, instead of it being separated right now, the Housing Authority has basically units, um, in South Town on both sides of the court. And we're asking for it to be vacated so that we can, um, proceed with the redevelopment.
Mr. Clerk, does this go along with item eleven and twelve? We could call them both at the same time, or do we need?
Yes, ma'am, um, uh, there's also, uh, okay, yes, ma'am, but there's an issue. It just depends on, okay, eleven and twelve, that's eleven and twelve, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, you want me to call twelve?
Yes, please, and we'll do them both together.
Okay, item twelve, a resolution waiving the vacation fee for case number S U B two thousand twenty dash seventy-nine. Proposed redevelopment of South Town Housing Authority of the Birmingham District site because of the positive impact the project will have on the city of Birmingham. Um, we'll use the same individual that made the motion initially.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions from the counselors now that the owners or the, um, development group presented the items to us? Any questions from the council or anyone from the public want to speak to these items?
Madam President.
Yes, sir, Mr. Hoyt.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, uh, we doing a lot uh, for the Housing Authority, and if y'all can't pay eleven thousand dollars, then, I mean, come on now. You know, and, and listen, and we in a pandemic in the city. And I think we can waive it. I mean, we could, the fact that we would consider, uh, vacating the, the alley is one thing. But to ask us to, uh, to, uh, to consume the cost is another. And I think eleven thousand dollars, I, this Hill, I think you got that in your pocket.
Well, uh, Councilor Hoyt, I, I, I can't speak to what I have in my pocket, but I would say, I would say that we prepared for this plan before the pandemic, um, happened. And we knew that this was a part of the process. Uh, being with the delays associated with the project, we still move forward, uh, with presenting this before the Economic Committee. We do understand that the city, Housing Authority, everyone is under economic crunch across the board. But we still wanted to present these items as it relate to the plan. Um, we do appreciate your consideration.
Okay, Ms. Hilliard.
Thank you. Appreciate your comment on that, Mr. White, thank you.
Saying, I mean, come on.
Yes.
You know, we done lifted a, a, a mountain this morning, earlier.
We sincerely, we sincerely appreciate that.
Thank you.
That doesn't hurt to ask.
Any other, come from any other counselors?
Ms. Alexander?
Yes.
Hey, I'm, I'm, uh, this is Joey, we're at Shoal Engineering. I was having a little trouble getting logged into you.
That's okay.
In reference to item eleven as far as the vacation, um, this is really just a simple vacation of some public, public right of way. It's an alley that runs north and south through the block. Um, and about sixty-three hundred and thirty-nine square feet. And again, this is a, a step in integrating all the properties into, um, to a single property. There will be more of these coming, but it is a very
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Don't forget to mute counselors.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. Thank you very much, sir, for, uh, giving us that additional information uh, regarding the vacation. As you said, it seems something that's
I apologize for my tardiness here.
Pretty standard, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, any questions from the counselors? I believe we're ready for a vote. We didn't have anyone from the public. So, uh, Mr. Clerk, I'll go ahead and call for the vote.
Okay, uh, Madam, um, Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Um, I don't know if it's an issue if we do them all, both at the same time.
Let's go ahead, since we did have the question, so let's, we'll do eleven, and then we'll come back and do twelve, that's fine.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, I need the, uh, vote five on twelve, Councilor Abbott. I mean, eleven, I'm sorry. This is for you, item eleven.
For the vacation.
Yes, ma'am, item number eleven is first.
Aye.
Uh, give me one second, please, I'm sorry. Item, okay, Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Reluctantly, yes.
Councilmember Smithman, absent, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Parker. Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye, item eleven passes. Now item twelve, thank you.
All right, item twelve. Give me a second. Councilmember Abbott.
No.
Councilmember Hilliard. Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
No.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Aye.
Councilmember Smithman is absent, Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Parker. Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye, that item passes.
Okay. All right, uh, looks like we're it.
Thank you. We do have a message in the, okay, we do have a message in the chat regarding item ten. Mr. Clerk, uh, we'll go ahead before we consider that, and we'll go on to the next item as we read the information in the chat. Thank you.
Okay, um, we're at item thirteen and fourteen, they're actually kind of together, but there's been a request because it had to be re-advertised for one week delay for both items. So, um, I can read both items and that request can take place, I guess. Item thirteen, I'm sorry. Yes, item thirteen. An ordinance to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one by appropriating one million five hundred thousand dollars to Enslie High School. Mixed-use redevelopment health food option. And item fourteen, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute one redevelopment agreement with Zimmerman Properties, S C L L C, a North company. Um, herein collectively referred to as redeveloper, under which the redeveloper, redevelop property known as the former Enslie High School. Located at twenty-three oh one Avenue J, Birmingham for a mixed-use development, and the city shall convey the redevelopment property to, uh, the redeveloper for a purchase price of fifty thousand dollars, which the city has determined to be the use value of the redevelopment property as defined in Code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, section twenty-four dash two dash six eight. And shall further provide certain incentives in the form of a city grant of up to uh, one million five hundred thousand dollars in connection with the project and providing the city grant will promote economic development of the city constitutes a public purpose and is authorized by constituent with and enforcement objectives of Amendment Number seven seventy-two. I need a motion to get it on the floor first, and then we can do the delay.
Remove.
Second.
Right, um, Quinn and Councilmember Abbott, and the item is before you for discussion or delay.
Uh, any discussion on this item?
So what was the issue? We need to, we need to have a one week delay, or we can vote?
Yep.
Madam Chair.
That's back on item ten. Let me get the staff report, Mr. Chad, go ahead.
Yes, we just need a one week delay because the original seven seven two, when this item was before the council last, we didn't receive unanimous consent. So we have to re-notice the seven seven two, so we're just asking for a one week delay, so it'll be on the council agenda for next week.
All right, and there's, yes, go ahead, Mr. Hilliard.
Move for a one week delay.
Second.
Second.
All right, so I have Councilor Hilliard, and I'll do Council Williams for the second for the one week delay. Are you ready to vote?
Let's go ahead and call for the vote. There's no question, thank you.
Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman is absent, Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods. Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Parker, absent, Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye. So we just voted for a one week delay on those items, thank you. Now, Mr. Clerk, if we could go back to number ten, I, I
Sorry.
Here's
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yes, on number ten, I received communication that we can't delay, delay that item, because it has to be re-advertized for four weeks. Is that the, you've been shared to on number ten? That correct the number ten?
Um, uh, number ten, I don't know, I guess.
Who's the developer here? Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
This is Joey, we're at Shoal Engineering. I, I was having trouble getting in earlier.
Okay, thank you.
I need a motion to reconsider item.
All right, Mr. Brin, hold on one second. Um, we're asking now for a motion so that we can reconsider this item.
Oh, move.
That we reconsider.
Okay, uh, so that's Councilmember Hilliard, Abbott's, uh, all in favor, let it be known by saying, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, um, all right, the item is back before you.
All right, now, Mr. Brin, if you could go ahead and give us some information, thank you, so we can
Very good. Uh, again, I apologize for my tardiness, uh, I was struggling getting, getting in with you guys. But basically, this is, uh, a block, uh, that Red Mountain Theater is, uh, improving, uh, between Second and Third Avenue South and, uh, Sixteenth and Seventeenth South. And, and what's happening here, in previous resurveys, there was a section of alley that runs east and west through the block had been vacated. And it left about a one hundred and fifty-foot strip of alley running through the block that was open, that went to nowhere, really, it dead end, dead ended into the area, to the lot that had previously been resurfaced. So what we are requesting, uh, approval from this body is to go on and let us go on and vacate that one hundred and fifty-foot of alley and incorporate it in one of the lots in the, uh, there, uh, the little piece of, uh, air rights vacation is for a canopy that will protrude into, uh, Second Avenue South about, uh, six to eight feet, so that's, uh, the long and short of it, Ms. Alexander.
Right, thank you very much. Uh, now that we've had the opportunity to hear from the developer, do we have any one from the public that wishes to ask any questions? Of the developer? Any questions, counsel? All right, having, and I believe we're ready to call for the vote. We'll go ahead and call for the vote on this item.
Yeah, you give me a motion to adopt this, if someone to move it.
I move approval.
All right.
Second.
Okay, I'll do Councilmember Hilliard.
Thanks.
Uh, Councilmember Abbott.
Aye.
Councilmember Hilliard.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Yes.
Councilmember O'Quinn.
Yes.
Councilmember Smithman is absent, Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Council President Parker, Council President Pro Tim Alexander.
Aye, that item passes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you for indulging me on that.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, Mr. Clerk, it appears to me, according to my notes, the next item would be, I'll let you call it up, I'm looking at
Okay.
Four, but go ahead and call the next.
At twenty-three is withdrawn, and I think Counselor Hoyt removed thirty-five. So, um, I'll pull it up right quick, item thirty-five. A resolution accepting and approving the bid of Southern Remodeling, Alabama, Edgar, Alabama, for CRGP Housing Rehabilitation, case number uh, FY nineteen dash eighty-four, FY nineteen dash eighty-nine, FY nineteen dash ninety-one, FY nineteen, FY nineteen dash one oh one, FY nineteen one oh six, FY nineteen one oh seven, FY nineteen one oh nine, FY nineteen one forty, FY nineteen one forty-one, and FY nineteen one forty-two. It prices on file off of the purchasing age for a period of one year. For Community Development Department, this has been the lowest bid submitted, motion, please.
I move approval.
Second.
Item is before you.
All right, Mr. Hoyt, just pull this item.
Yeah, well, I'm just trying to see if staff could explain what's going on with, with, uh, with this. And if, and, I mean, when are they going to be remodeling?
Thank you. Do you have someone from staff that can answer, uh, address that question?
Yes, Madam Pro Tim, this is Chris Hatcher, I serve as interim director of community development. And Counselor Hoyt, this, these are bids for our critical repair program. Um, Southern Remodeling bid for these items, and they will be renovating, um, critical repair items for um, the number of, uh, homes that are listed over here, which are the FY numbers that, uh, that, that identify within the, uh, packet that, um, uh, Mr. Clerk read.
Funding sources.
Funding sources, CDBG funding. This is part of our critical repair process.
Okay, and so how, how many we, how many, um, agencies or companies we have, uh, doing, uh, remodeling, I mean, doing the, uh, housing repair?
At the moment, I'm not sure. We have to work with purchasing for this packet here. We had, uh, two, um, bidders on the property, and these were, uh, and Southern Remodeling was the lowest bidder.
And so I guess I want to know, I guess, the extent of their contract. And it does, it depends on the amount, the, the work that's going to be done, and so how did, how did this, how did y'all come to the conclusion?
Yes, sir, once, uh, a critical repair application is approved, our housing rehab specialists go out and they, uh, quote, you know, they, uh, estimate how much the cost will be, and then they work up, uh, the, uh, the costs. The costs are then bidded out, uh, through our, the city's procurement office, and, you know, it's a public bid. And any, um, any contractor who is certified and, uh, certified with the city of Birmingham and licensed to the state has the option to bid on, on, on these specific bid packets.
And so, um, and I guess how, how is it going to be monitored? Because I, I, I know that some of the residents have had problems with, um, uh, these persons doing the housing rehab, not doing it properly. We've been called on a couple of house sales, I'm not saying this particular company, but I'm just, you know, we've had people to call and they said they didn't do a great job, and then we had to go back and, and get somebody else to And get somebody else to, to, uh, to fix up what they didn't fix up. So, uh, and I just wanna know how we're gonna monitor this.
Yeah, uh, our critical repair projects are monitored by our housing rehab specialists. And they are, they go out, they not only cost out the project, but, um, after, while the contractor is doing work. They go out, they monitor, and then once, um, the contractor has notified us that the work is completed, our critical repair. Um, specialists, they go out and they monitor the work, they review the work. And then if they meet, uh, our standards, our HUD standards for compliance, then we, uh, notify, uh, we notify finance to pay. Pay the bid amount. So it is monitored throughout the process.
Yeah, and well, I would have thought that these were monitored too, uh, throughout the process, but we had to end up. Really paying twice for something that should have been done the first time. So, uh, and maybe, you know, that wouldn't, I don't know if that was under your leadership or not, sir. So I'm, I'm not gonna throw you under the bus on that. Uh, get at, uh, Mr. Thatcher, but, um, but I wanna make sure. That we're monitoring because this is taxpayers' dollar, dollars. And, um, and I want the contractor to do the same work he do in Mountain Brook and their whales because it's the same dollar. And, you know, and, you know, want them to clean up behind themselves and all that because we getting the calls. And I wouldn't put present something to you if we had not gotten the calls and I could probably pull the, the emails. Uh, on those that we've had calls on. So just, just ensure, uh, Mr. Thatcher, under your watch. Okay, and so we get, so we getting the best bug for our, uh, you know, the best work for our dollar.
Yes, sir. Uh, we make it a priority to, um, monitor and to, uh, give the best quality of work. If you are receiving complaints, please refer them to community development so we can investigate. But, you know, our housing rehab specialists touch this project from the beginning to the end.
Very good.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this item? Any other counselors? Alright, I believe we're ready to come for the vote, Mr. Clerk.
Council member Abbott. Council member here you. Council member Hoyt. Council member Quinn. Council member Smithman is absent. Council member Williams. Council member Woods. Council president Parker. Council president Proton Alexander.
Alright, that item passes. Next item.
Think we're down to the addendum items? Item fifty three next, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Shannon Long doing business as. Figure Creative LLC, under which Figure Creative will provide interaction with constituents. Neighborhood associations, fishing rodeo, healthy food initiative, park program, reading initiative. And issue awareness around district-specific initiatives for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. From April the ninth, two thousand and twenty one through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one. The allocation is exclusively for the purpose stated. Said funds will come from District Two discretionary funds submitted by the city attorney and recommended by counselor Williams. Alright, item is before you.
Alright, do we have any discussion on this particular item? Any of the counselors?
Yeah, do we have a transparency on these call? Sir, sir.
Yeah, it's emailed.
Let me see if I can pull it up. It came from you, sir?
No, it came from the clerk.
I do see the email that had the item number. From Miss D's.
I should, you should have received the link from me with all the attachments and the. Associated item with the.
Okay, I see addendum, okay.
And that link, sir, has all the supporting information?
Yeah, what, what, what I have here is just the item itself for the addendum. It came from this Lisa D's about nine nineteen A M.
If you look for the email from me, uh, counselor Hoyt, leave free.
Yeah, Mr. Hoyt, that came in at nine twenty. From Mr. Breaker.
Mr. Hoyden, short, um, this is the, uh, young lady that does work in my office. Um, that is our contractor that we hire every year.
Oh, you just extended her contract?
Yes, sir.
And that's fifty thousand dollars until. I need a word for you.
Send to the law department. That's, that's gonna be, uh, that's gonna be a lot of project she's doing. And, Mr., I don't think you do wanna work for me.
Oh, I work bad. Today, all the love we have, all the love we have.
Are you bad?
Mr. President is back, so we're in discussion on this item, sir, so I'll turn it back.
We're ready to vote.
Can you give me one second, council president Hoyt? I have some language issues here. Can you give me one second?
By all means.
Uh, let me, um, pull the item back up. Can I, uh, let me reread the synopsis? If you would allow me, sir. Um, I was looking at the, uh, email from the attorney's office here. So I should have used this synopsis instead of the one that's before you, uh, you resolution authorized the mayor to execute an agreement with Shannon Long. Doing business as Figure Creative LLC, under which Figure Creative will provide interaction with constituents, neighborhood associates. Fishing rodeo, healthy food initiative, park programming, reading initiative. And issue awareness around district-specific initiatives for an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars from April the ninth. Two thousand and twenty one through June the thirtieth, two thousand and twenty one, uh, this allocation. To, to the purpose of state, it said funds will come from District Two discretionary funds. I'm sorry, I'm getting emails as the meeting is going on, so I'm trying to keep up with all this. I think that's different from what I initially read, um, I think.
Okay, alright, so we're good now? Okay, well, we're ready for vote.
Council member Abbott. Council member here you. Council member Hoyt. Council member Hoyt. I can't hear you, council. I, I, I'm reading your lips. I think you said yes, okay. Council member Quinn. Okay, uh, council member Smithman is asking, council member Williams. Council member Woods. Council president, okay, council member Pro Tim Alexander. Y'all swapped it up over here, council president.
Okay, that item passes. Alright, thank you. I, that item passes.
Real item fifty four, uh, Mr. President. The following advanced expense account William Parker or city council president, April the thirteenth. Through the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one, four hundred and three dollars, Montgomery, Alabama, to attend meetings involving the Alabama.
Move the item.
Okay, item is before you. Council member Abbott. Council member here you. Council member Hoyt.
Yes, with a report.
Council member Quinn. Council move Smithman, council, council member Williams. Council member Woods. Council president Pro Tim Alexander. Council president Parker.
Alright, okay, that item passes. Next item, Mr. Court.
Item fifty five, a resolution authorize the mayor to complete. A grant application with the United States Department of Health and Human Services Office of Assistant Secretary for the Health Related Funding Opportunity. M P dash C P I dash twenty one dash six, advancing health literacy. To enhance equitable community responses to COVID nineteen for an amount not to exceed four million dollars. Over a budget term of up to two years and execute any and all documents required. Or the city to complete the advancing health literacy to enhance equitable community responses to COVID nineteen grant with the United States Department of. Office of Assistant Secretary for Health to provide government implementation of evidence-based healthy literacy strategies. That are culturally appropriate to enhance COVID nineteen testing, contact tracing and or mitigation measures. And mitigation measures in racial and ethnic minority populations and other socially vulnerable populations, including racial. And ethnic minority rural communities, which will allow with both not, but not duplicate existing federal efforts to disseminate resources. For COVID nineteen responses, said funds shall be used by the city to provide assistance to targeted populations through existing or newly created programs. And partnerships with no matching fund due from the city and authorize the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such documents. As are appropriate and necessary to accept and expend the grant funds on behalf of the city and the court with the grant funds. Motion please.
Move the item.
Alright, item is before you, Mr. President.
Yeah, thank, thank you, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, Mr. Duster, I'm sure you have a. Report for us, how we gonna work together on the line for this, Mr. Duster, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Parker, and I'm enjoying the tremendous collegiality amongst the council members today. It's really a great, uh, example for our community. Um, uh, what, what, we, we are in a very aggressive posture, uh, direction to pursue any and all opportunities to mitigate. Uh, COVID nineteen impacts both health and economic. Right now, um, the federal government has, is making, um. Making ready and available a series of funding opportunities, um, that municipalities, um, thanks to President Biden's focus on municipalities. Can pursue, uh, and implement in our communities. Um, again, it goes from all the things that were listed in the ordinance itself. From COVID nineteen education, testing, vaccinations, overcoming vaccination hazards to see, um, just keeping people in that forward leaning mode. To make sure that we really stamp out the, uh, the pandemic here, um, to avoid some of the flare ups that are happening across the country. And we're working in partnership with the Miles College, um, as we develop this plan.
Okay, let me just say before I open it up and we'll vote real quick and I'm gonna support it, uh, Mr. Duster. I guess I will send that through the mayor, but, uh, we also been doing a. An aggressive approach to our efforts. I wanna make sure, uh, as we're working on the, on the application that we have. We have input from both sides, so we can work through that and meet up with that, uh, later if the mayor is okay with that. We could meet on that later this week, sir.
I'll absolutely, uh, speak with the mayor and circle right back to you, Mr. President.
Uh, anybody ready to vote? Okay, ready to vote.
Alright, council member Abbott. Council member here you. Council member Hoyt. Council member Quinn. Council member Smithman is absent. Council member Williams. Council member Woods. President Pro Tim Alexander. President Parker.
Alright, okay, that item passes, um, is that, um, for today?
Yeah, looks like it, yes, sir.
Okay, alright, great. Alright, uh, council Abbott, we have an announcement about meetings.
Oh, yes, we do.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning again.
Okay, uh, good morning. The, uh, next but virtual budget and finance meeting will be held April twenty sixth, twenty twenty one. At three thirty P M. Submissions are due on April twenty first by twelve P M. Which is the same as noon. Uh, there are no exceptions and the acceptable and approved process. Um, or no exceptions to the acceptable and approved process. So anything submitted late will be put on the next budget and finance agenda. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yes, ma'am, okay. Anyone else have anything about meetings, uh, this week? Uh, eighty meetings only, um. Yes, sir.
I will, just on the committee meetings, um, everybody on the council will be receiving, of course, me today. Uh, regarding, um, a public safety update from the public safety committee. Um, as well as I know that the, uh, there are some members of the public ask some questions about. Uh, uh, different aspects around public safety as it relates to the, uh, the upcoming classic. Which obviously will look very different with no tailgating and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, the police chief will be making a, uh, a statement. Uh, today at three, in the three o'clock hour to the media, uh, on that, uh, to provide that update to the public.
Regarding the classic?
The safety measures for the classic.
Oh, okay, okay, alright, okay.
Mr. President.
Okay, Mr. You finished, I'll just.
Yeah, my computer's about to die too. I can try to get on another one if Mr. Hoyt has a specific question for me.
I do.
Okay, hold on, let me see if I can get on another computer real quick.
Okay, council.
Yeah, uh, my question is, is, is there a plan, uh, from the committee or from you as chair? A public safety to, um, to speak about, um, the killings that are taking place in the city. And, um, if in fact there's a strategy. Um, that you considering? Cause we've not heard from the chair regarding, um, all of this, uh. Killers and crimes been going on.
Council Hoyt, be mindful of the essential functions related to this meeting.
Ma'am?
I'm saying just be mindful of conversations related to the essential functions of the city related to this meeting.
Okay, it is. He's the chair of public safety and I'm asking him a question. Do, do we need a turn to interpret that too?
No, I think what we're, uh, uh, well, let me try to intervene just real quick, uh. I think it's an upcoming, potential upcoming meeting that's gonna be taking place today. Uh, I think council Williams was giving us. Uh, an opportu- just to alert us that there were certain things that were gonna be discussed at the committee meeting. Counselor Hoyt, I think is, is asking for either an item to either be addressed at this meeting. Or potentially call a, uh, special meeting for some additional information. So it would, so I think we're focusing on what's on the committee agenda and a potential item on the committee meeting.
Yeah, well, you mentioned, mentioned, um, well, you mentioned safety and, you know, I'm, I'm concerned about the safety. And not just for this game, but I'm talking about the safety of this city. You know, and being the chair, I think you ought to have some opinion about that.
Alright, Ca- council Hoyt, if you will do this, I know council Williams, I think his computer is going blank, um. We will have follow up.
Could, could the president relate that message to the?
Yes, I was gonna say, his, his, he, his screen is going blank, but we will communicate and follow back up, uh, on that, uh, as the day goes on.
Cause it's not gonna go away just cause we don't mention it.
Yes, sir.
But, but I, I do think that, you know, the city, the council, the committee needs to have, um. Some, some understanding of what's the plan to fight the crime. I mean, you know, and, and I rarely try to preach. Uh, rarely preach about stuff that's going on around here, but, you know, I'm having to preach on Sundays. About some of this stuff that's going on. And, and I don't like to do that. But I think, you know, it's enough for us to, to at least develop a plan, uh, along with the mayor in terms of how we deal with some of these issues.
Yes, sir.
Too many young people dying.
Yes, sir.
At an epidemic proportion, but, uh, we have an hour. Uh, can I go and make my announcement since you recognize?
If it's about, yeah, it's about your community, yes, sir.
Okay, it is. Our committee meeting is tomorrow at twelve, uh, and it'll be virtual and, um. And so I just wanna make the public aware of that.
Hey, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I got in on my iPad. Um, was India able to answer Mr. Hoyt's question?
Uh, no, sir. Um, we will circle back around on that, um. For, to, um, your meeting today is going to be specifically about the Magic City Classic Weekend. But I think there's going to be a larger, uh, conversation around of probably a future meeting, probably next week or the week after around an update on, uh, crime overall. But to, and, and that's what council Hoard was conveying. So perhaps we can follow up on that later today.
Yeah, so the memo that I'm going to send out typically addresses those. And, uh, if Mr. Hoyt will answer my, uh, phone calls, then he can have it in person as well.
Okay, all right. I'll be sure to do so.
Okay, thank you all. All right.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known.
All opposed. Okay, everyone stay safe. Thank you. Be safe, everyone.